Let's move to the roll call, please.
Mr. Alth?
Here.
Mr. Beistow? Mr. Benz?
Here.
Dr. Pyke?
Here.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mr. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Miller? Here. That means there are eight present. Just to note, Mr. Beistow had family commitments tonight, and so he will not be here. We will then enter our superintendent's comments. Is there any citizens' comments?
There are no citizens' comments this evening.
Go ahead, Doc.
I have a couple of correspondences that I'd like to share with you. The first one, again, came from the Pennsylvania Department of Education Bureau of Special Education. The Pennsylvania Department of Education Bureau of Special Education has the responsibility for the general supervision and implementation of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. In fulfillment of these responsibilities, the Bureau of Special Education annually reviews data regarding the participation and performance of students with disabilities on statewide assessments. In the course of our review of the data, the Bureau of Special Education began to analyze data to identify those school buildings where students with disabilities demonstrated consistent evidence of growth at least the same as or above the average progress made by their non-disabled peers over the past three years. We are pleased to notify you that Southmoreland Elementary School is recognized as one of the schools which has for the past three years demonstrated growth at the same or above the progress of their non-disabled peers. While recognizing that many students with disabilities are not at grade level, it is critical that these students continue to make growth each year to maximize their ability to enable them to be successful as they transition to their post-secondary plans. On behalf of the Bureau of Special Education, we offer you congratulations and thank you for the efforts you have made in accomplishing this continued growth over the past three years. We would ask that you share and extend these congratulations and thanks to the staff in the respective buildings who have accomplished these results. We would encourage you to share the practices that have been effective with other districts. So, John Lee, I would like to congratulate you and your staff and Mr. Clara as our Director of Student Services as well and those folks who had a part to play in this. I think that's a wonderful achievement when we have students with disabilities who are progressing at the same rate as their non-disabled peers. That says a lot about not only the practices that are in place, but the dedication that you and your faculty put forth on a daily basis to making sure that our kids are achieving and achieving well. So, I thank you.
Thank you. Excellent job.
Just to note, that didn't happen by accident and it didn't happen without those students having a strong start at the primary center as well. So, it's a good reflection on all of those folks. The second letter I have for you, and I'm not going to read it in its entirety because some of it just has to do with some instructional kinds of things, but the next letter is also from the Department of Education and it's addressed to Mrs. Lynn Huggins. Congratulations. We have reviewed the documentation you have submitted to demonstrate compliance to the new meal standards. We are pleased to inform you that based upon review of your documentation, you are eligible to receive a performance-based reimbursement for each lunch meal served as of December 1, 2012. This equates to an additional six cents for each lunch served during the 2012-2013 school year, and that's signed by Von De Kool, State Director of Child Nutrition Programs. What that means is Mrs. Huggins and her staff have gone through our menus and our recipes, looking at the nutritional content and making sure that everything we serve on a daily basis meets the new nutrition guidelines. And because they put forth that effort to do that, we are now receiving an extra six cents per lunch. It doesn't sound like a whole lot, but when you multiply six cents times the number of lunches we serve on a daily basis, times the 180 days worth of lunches, that is a significant amount of money that Mrs. Huggins and her team are bringing into the food service program. So, I'll warmly commend you and your staff as well. For the 12th of October. The last night I have, as you know, our middle school was recognized by the National Association of Secondary School Principals and Metropolitan Life as being a breakthrough school. And as part of that, we will be featured in the next issue of Principal Magazine. And I've asked Dr. Scott and Mr. Nash to talk to you a little bit about the article that we expect to see in Principal Magazine next month.
Yes, I'm very pleased to announce I got the first edition draft of the article that is going to be in the Principal Leadership Magazine for the NASSP. This is an example. This is not the actual magazine or the copy, but this is what it will be posted in. We have the actual article that will be posted in in May, and it's a seven-page. It's a very, very nice article. I brought a color version of it. It shows our students, and of course, there's the write-up. So, it is a continuation of us being part of the NASSP Breakthrough School Program. So, I will have copies for everyone. Once it is published, we are allotted 100 copies for the school district, so I will make sure that everyone on the board gets a copy of it. With that also, Dr. Scott and I have been chosen to attend the next forum for the NASSP, and it is in Washington, D.C., and I'm very, very excited to be a part of this. We will actually have the opportunity to sit down with the U.S. Department of Education. We will be having a dinner with the U.S. Department of Education, and then the next day, we are given the opportunity to go to Capitol Hill to meet with the legislators and discuss policy, educational policy. So, it is a very exciting time. I'm really looking forward to it. We will also then meet the Board of Directors for the NASSP, and of course, there's the work end of it, too. We have to attend some leadership programs and everything like that. But, once again, it has been a tremendous honor to be a part of this process, and I'm very honored to be a part of our school district.
When are you going?
We will be going May 1st, 2nd, and 3rd.
So, we have people from the Southmoreland School District going to Washington to help shape national education policy. I think that's really, really wonderful, and I could be proud of the work that you folks are doing. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you once again.
All right. Just one of the things on the organization. I'd seen the initials, the N-A-S-P, and it's never quite clear to me, but this is really the, in lay terms, is the trade organization of the principals, of the national principals, like attorneys or whatever the profession is. This is the national trade, and so it really is. I say that because in some ways it works or it doesn't. It depends on who gives these or given by their people's life and honor.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Go ahead.
Are they part of the PLC?
Absolutely.
Also, so that's part of this whole process of them being approved also, that their team is also part of the PLC?
And one of the things that the professional learning community model attempts to do is to provide a guaranteed viable curriculum to all students. And if we're guaranteeing that curriculum to this student, then we're also guaranteeing it for that student as well. And I think that's been a big part of how our students have been able to do well, our students with disabilities. Absolutely. Thank you for asking the question.
Good. Let's move to the minutes.
You'll be asked to approve the minutes from the March 7, 14, and 21. More meetings at the next voting meeting. Discussion on the minutes.
Seeing we're hearing none, let's move on to the finance.
We do not have the Treasuries Report and Bills Payable available for you, so those will be in next week's packet, but we would ask you to vote on those next week. And while we're on the topic of finance, I did want to inform you that our second interim business manager arrived this morning. The gentleman's name is Sheldon Burke. Mr. Burke is retired from the Blackhawk School District, and since his retirement, he has been an interim business manager in 12 other districts. I know he has been in the Armstrong School District. I know he has been in the United School District, and I know he has been in the Jeanette School District. So, there's the three local districts where he has worked. So, you'll have an opportunity to meet him in the very near future.
Maybe while we're on the business, to mention that business and finance, we had a meeting on Tuesday night. I think almost everyone around the table was there with our consultants in regards to securing a long-term business manager. And out of that, we are naming a, we're going to, that was a very helpful meeting, and everyone got to participate and got to give their ideas to the consultants. And out of that, in any case, we have a, we will have a committee now to work with them and with the administration to bring finalists and to bring the package that we would be looking at. And for that committee, I've seen Michael Benz and Ms. Kaufman and Ms. Love. So, those three will be working on our behalf. Just to note.
Levi, since you brought that up for discussion, I'd like to make a comment. When they were reviewing the job description, I said that nowhere in there does the business manager have interfaced with the board, that it's, you know, there's the business manager, the superintendent, and then the board. And the gentleman there said he never heard of it being done any other way, that it always goes through the superintendent. And I'm sure all of you have heard of the Hamfield School District. It's about five miles down the road, and they have a business manager, whose name is Jude Abraham, who reports directly to the board. The superintendent is in charge of education. The business manager's in charge of finance. They talk to each other, but they each report independently to the board. So, since they're in the business of doing this and he never heard of it, you might want to inform him. In fact, in fact, it's not so uncommon, I found out, but my friend on the board that talked to me said they can feel free to call him if they have any questions. But yes, in fact, Hamfield does have a business manager that reports directly to the board.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Let's move to--
I have some questions under finance. I have a question about finance. This is a question for Mr. Petonik. It's a legal question. Mr. Petonik, when a school board makes a motion and it passes, that they will commit a certain amount of money for a specific purpose. Does anybody, under those circumstances, have the right to take money out of that committed fund balance and spend it to pay for something else?
The, there's a difference between the first three months of the fiscal year and then the final nine months of the fiscal year. I know that in the past, Mr. Business Manager would come in at the end of the year, not in the end, but close to the end of the year, and ask for approval to move monies. Now, I don't know whether that had already occurred or was about to occur.
Mr. Petonik, I'm only talking about committed money, the money that's the committed portion of it, for a specific purpose. That's the only part I'm talking about. The rest of it, you know, I know they move it around, but I'm talking about if you commit money for a specific purpose by board action, can someone come in?
Are you talking about that specific designation?
Yes.
You mean the word committed?
Yes. Can someone come in and take money out of there?
It says that gives it that special designation by vote of the board. I think the board would then have to vote on it.
Okay. We got a new budget, and I'm going to read to you. Additional transfer from committed fund balance for additional early retirement incentive payments of $42,000. It's going to cost us $260,000 to pay off the new teachers who are retiring for their bonus money. But if you were, if you, at the time that motion was made, it was made to pay off the commitment that we made to the teachers who had retired up to that point in time. And that's all the money that's in there, because we calculated the amount of money and said that would be the amount. So, now, they have just gone in and taken out $42,000. Apparently, they're going to take out another 220-some thousand out of this money, and what's going to happen is it's going to run out. But my concern is that do they have the right to simply walk in there, take that money out of committed money, and spend it on something else? And I think the answer is no.
Well, I would, you know, are you talking about something that is proposed in the budget?
Well, we got it. It says right here, additional transfer from the committed fund balance for additional ERIP payments, four times $10,500 or $42,000, is what it says there.
I thank you for pointing that out, and we will correct that one in the next round.
Well, Josie, do you want to give me that speech again about these geniuses with their master's degrees who don't even know that you don't spend committed money on something else?
Our understanding about the fight is that that money was committed for early retirements, and that's what it's been--
Up to that point. Up to that point. If this board wants to commit more money to that fund balance to pay for the next $260,000, that's a different issue, Jack.
Yeah.
But, you know, in all their wisdom, I'm shocked that this brilliant person was able to do this.
This brilliant genius will go back and then double-check the minutes, so that we get that correct.
Well, I'm just going by what's on here, Jack. I'm just going by what's on here. I have another question, and I got quite a few. Well, I got about eight phone calls. Can we talk about this item that was in the paper? It says no tax increase for the budget, no tax increase.
The budget that you received does not reflect the tax increase. That's correct.
Okay. Well, this is the question. Is there going to be one or isn't there?
At this juncture, we have not recommended a tax increase. We'll see where we can continue to pair. We will hand you folks a budget that will either have a surplus or a deficit, and then it's up to this board to decide if they want to, A, have a tax increase, or B, cover a deficit fund balance, if there is a deficit. So, it's still a work in progress. I don't have an answer to that question.
Well, this is the question that I have, that people have said. Are you going to say there's no tax increase until May 21st, and then after May 21st, kick them in the teeth with it?
But I appreciate your question, and I don't play political games. I'm the superintendent.
Neither do I. Neither do I, Jack, and that's what this is. That's what this is.
I would respectfully disagree. I didn't write the article. Who wrote the article? Maybe Mr. Petonik is telling me that, and I don't know. But what I'm sharing with you is the current iteration of the budget has no tax increase listed, and we're doing our darndest to make sure that we have no tax increase. Can I tell you we're not going to have a tax increase? No, I can't tell you that.
Well, I think that people want to know that.
Absolutely.
Well, that's four years have been on this board. It's been this way every single year.
Yeah, but I didn't see this. I didn't see this, Josie. I didn't see this.
I'm sure if you go back to the years before and look at articles that say the exact same thing.
And then there wasn't one, and that's all I'm asking. When it said there was no tax increase, then there wasn't one.
You know, whatever.
We're having another budget meeting that they will schedule tonight at the end of the month. That might be a good time to discuss that.
Well, there's a lot of concern out there. Is there going to be one or isn't there?
Absolutely. I don't like high taxes either.
You know, and so, you know, that's my concern. I had a question about Mr. Porter's presentation. Do you think any of you could answer that?
I think it's the procedural thing. We had, how much time did Mr. Porter spend here with us?
Too much.
Half hour.
Half an hour.
Fifty-nine minutes.
Plenty of opportunity there to make your questions. I'm not taking any further questions on that issue at this point.
Are we taking any questions on finance?
She has a comment, but she had an opportunity to raise all the questions with Mr. Porter.
So, if we don't raise the issues and make that a four-hour meeting, we're not allowed to bring up any other questions?
It wasn't that long.
You're overruling her and not letting her ask another question? Is that what you're doing, Levi?
If she has a comment, she can make it, but Mr. Porter is no longer here, and we're not going to--
Really? I wouldn't have known that.
Okay. Thank you.
He talked about 41 teachers retiring, and he said that over and over and over, and I have a list of 63 plus four more, 67. Is there a difference then in his data for the 41 teachers he kept talking about as opposed to the 63?
Yeah, I don't know for sure, but we could certainly invite him back to answer that if you'd like. Yeah, let him come back and skew the numbers some more.
We're not going to review. We had a good session--
I don't have to be here. I know what he said, Gil.
And we're not going to, this isn't the time to review that. Let us go on to old business, Policy 610.
Policy 610, we will not be asking you to vote on at the next meeting because there will not be a 30-day lapse in terms of the posting, but we just have it listed for your discussion under Old Business, and the same would be true of Policy 622. So, if there is discussion, you can certainly talk about it, but it will not be on the agenda for voting because we haven't had the 30-day posting period. It will not be up.
Is that why it says May 9th on it? Is that why it says May 9th instead of April?
Yeah.
Dr. Pyke, just remind us again, in summary form, what those are, if anybody has any questions.
Sure. Policy 610 had to do with the limits whereby items had to be bid or quoted, subjects, the price of subject to bidder quotations. Previously, anything that was $10,000 or over had to be bid. That amount by law was moved to $18,500. The same with construction, reconstruction, and repair. It went from $10,000 to $18,500. Price of, item subject to quote, it used to be $4,000, and we had to have three written quotes. Now, that limit has been raised to 10, so anything between $10,000 and $18,500 has to be quoted. Anything over $18,500 has to be competitively bid, and anything under 10 does not have to be quoted or bid. So, that's the difference there. The other policy has to do with Gatsby Statement 34, excuse me, which we actually did not have in the past, but it has to do with how items are depreciated and capitalized, or in some cases, how they're not, because they don't meet the threshold for capitalization, such as library books, computer equipment, classroom furniture, things of that nature. So, we're asking you to adopt that policy.
Very good.
I have an item under Old Business. Does that surprise you?
Okay. Go ahead.
I just want to know if any school board members made any request to go to any conferences? No?
I don't see any--
Well, that I have no reason.
Very good. New business?
Item 5 has to do with a corrective action plan. State auditors were here for quite a number of months, actually, and they audited school years 8, 9, and 9, 10, and presented us with a clean audit. There were no findings and no observations. We were quite pleased about that. But the very day we were having our exit conference, we got a letter from the Department of Education wanting to know if they could have a copy of our board-approved corrective action plan from the audit that was completed two years ago that had to do with the 7, 6, 7, and 7, 8 school years, I believe. I was just getting started at that time as the superintendent. We did correct the items. There were two observations on that audit, but I was not aware that we had to have a written corrective action plan passed by the board that submitted to the department. I just thought we had to correct the items and move forward. So, I have further consideration, the corrective action plan, which is really more of a story as to what we did. First observation that was noted was internal control weaknesses over remote access to the student accounting system. And what that had to deal with was the Central Sescouhan Intermediate Unit is our vendor, and they handle the database for all of our student records. And from time to time, it's necessary for people from that company or that intermediate unit to go into our system and perform maintenance. And when they did that, they would make a phone call. They would be granted access with a password, and then they would go in and do what they needed to do, but the password wasn't changed. So, we instituted a system now so that when the software vendor needs access to the student information system, the vendor requests access from the technology department. They provide a password. They inform the tech department when the work is done, and then the tech department immediately changes the password. We're also required, and we do, we keep phone logs, email correspondence logs, so that we can document whenever the company had access. We shared that with the auditors, and they were quite happy with that, so that was cleared. So, that's item number one. Item number two, I may have to do with the memorandum of understanding not being updated in a timely manner. We're required by law, I believe it's under the Safe Schools Act, to have a memorandum of understanding in terms of how we deal with the police departments that cover our various buildings. And we have had a two-year memorandum of understanding update every two years with the state police for the buildings that are not in the borough, but we were not able to get a memorandum of understanding with the borough police department, and there were a number of reasons for that, which were somewhat nebulous to make. But we were finally able to speak with the mayor and the borough manager and the chief of police and get that straightened out. And I did actually have a preliminary meeting with the Protection Committee of Borough Council. And once we talked a little bit, they were quite willing to authorize the signing of that MOU, so we were able to get that signed and get it cleared up. But as part of the meeting that we had with the Protection Committee, they asked if a small subcommittee of the board might meet with their Protection Committee to discuss some safety issues in terms of students as they're walking to and from a school and things of that nature. I think they were specifically interested in talking a little bit about our school police versus their crossing guards and how the two interface. So, Mr. President, I would ask that at some point in the near future, you would name a committee of this board to meet with the borough's Protection Committee and discuss some of the items that they're interested in discussing.
Thank you.
So, we now have that signed MOU, and that's been submitted, so that item was cleared from the two-year-ago audit. So, those are the two items that are on the corrective action plan that we'll ask you to approve at the next meeting.
Thank you. Just on that subcommittee, if any of you are interested or open to serving on that, just let me know. We'll name it here in the next week or two. It's to meet with the borough officials regarding safety.
I think there are three Borough Council members are on the Protection Committee. All right.
Any further questions on this? Let's keep going then.
The next item has to do with Policy 828, which we currently don't have. That would be a fraud policy, and obviously, we're against it, and we wanted to memorialize the fact that we're against it. So, we're recommending a draft of a fraud policy, 828.
I have some corrections and additions I'd like to suggest.
And Dr. Pyke apparently has some things that she'd like to suggest. One of the things that I want to talk to you about before Dr. Pyke gets to what she has to talk about on page 4, 4, item number three, bank statements and cancelled checks being reconciled by individuals who are not authorized to sign checks or involved in check processing. That may be a bit of an issue because we have a very limited staff in our business office, so after I consult with the folks in the business office, we may or may not need to add it to that particular item. And other than that, we present it as written.
Okay. Comments, questions?
Page 1, item number 8. I think it's imperative that we add the word facilities to that. It talks about records, furniture, fixtures, or equipment, and I think--
What was the word?
Facilities. Facilities should be in there because it says the destruction, removal, or inappropriate use of records, furniture, fixtures, or equipment, and I think facilities is a major concern in terms of fraud. The second thing on page 2, under number 11.
Is there a discussion on that particular topic before we amend the draft?
What are the--
How do you word it?
We'll just put the word--
Just add the word facilities, that's all.
Are you suggesting that it would be fixtures, comma, equipment, or facilities? That's what you're suggesting. What are the, any responses from anyone regarding that?
No, no.
No, no. Buildings not on here. The whole building is not listed.
Yeah, somebody would do something or--
Deface the building.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
But that's not on there. Let me give you an example, Gil. Suppose somebody decides they're going to bring five cars for sale and park them in our lot and use our facilities as a used car lot. We can't have that. That's fraudulent use of the facilities. It's not equipment, furniture, fixtures, or anything like that. It's the facility itself. It would be the grounds. The facilities would include the grounds, would it not, Dr. Moner?
Yeah, would.
That seems to make sense.
It's fine.
Good. Thank you. Another one. Do you have any?
Yeah. On the second page, under number 11, it says, "The Director of Finance and Operations." It's my understanding we don't have one. We have a business manager, and we have a supervisor of maintenance and so forth, but do we have a position in this school district called the Director of Finance and Operations?
That would be synonymous with the business manager.
Okay. I looked at the job descriptions. They seem to say business manager on them. The third was at the bottom of page three. Jack, it's the same thing you talked about, only I saw it under segregation of duties. Where possible, more than one person will be involved in financial transactions. No one person shall be responsible for an entire financial transaction. And to me, that goes with your number three. No?
Yes and no. I think this has to do with purchase orders. In other words, I can't write a purchase order, approve a purchase order, cut the check to pay for the purchase order. There are other people who are involved in that in terms of checks and balances. Balancing, reconciling the bank statement is not necessarily a financial transaction, although the two may be somewhat related.
What about paying a bill or processing a bill?
Well, that's part of the transaction. The other part of the transaction is cutting the purchase order.
Well, okay, that's, and I'm saying, I think that because, and we talked about this in the audit exit conference, that the, we don't have that many people, and I just saw one and three as being the same issue, Jack. That's all I'm saying. We don't have a whole lot of people.
Yeah, we're okay with number one because there's an approval process for purchase orders. So, in other words, I can't write a purchase order for a new car for myself and then write out a check to pay for it, much as I'd like to, because I don't initiate purchase orders, but I approve the ones that other people write, and then somebody else besides me pays for that. So, there's always a second or third set of eyes looking at every transaction.
See, I'm not looking at it as purchase orders only. I guess I'm saying that there's so many different things. All I'm saying is if we want to clear up three, we should clear up one and make it okay, is all I'm saying, because we have to. We don't have that many people, right?
Well, we're okay with number one.
Okay.
Because payroll is a financial transaction.
Okay.
There are particular timesheets, for example, that have to be approved before the payroll person can pay them. So, we're okay there, but in terms of the actual lots and bolts balancing the checkbook, that's where we're a little bit shorthanded.
All right. We will be looking at that ere voting. We'll have the policy to post.
And we'll make those corrections in the next draft that you receive, or change, I should say. Okay, the next policy is policy 001, name and classification. By virtue of the fact that we're planning to vacate 609 Parker Avenue, that can't be our mailing address anymore. However, policy dictates that it is, so we would propose that the mailing address be changed to this building, which is where my office is scheduled to be, and then that will be the official mailing address of this building in a spotty way.
Very good. When would that be effective?
That would be effective July 1st, so that's when we said we were going to close the building.
I would suggest you put that in, since we're not there yet.
Can't change it now, can you?
We'll put an effective date at the top of the policy. As it stands now, it won't be approved until June 10th because of the, again, the thirty.
It has significance with the service and process and things like that as well.
All right. Yeah, so Peggy on the top of that policy, right effective date, July 1, 2013.
Jack, they forward mail for a year after you change it, don't they?
Pardon me?
They forward mail for a year, like mail that would, because we'll still get mail at Parker Avenue.
Yeah, I actually, I'm at the post office, and one of our man drivers.
You don't have delivery. You don't have delivery. So, that's not going to matter. Oh, good, good, good. I didn't know that. I thought you had it delivered.
The multipurpose, no, I'm sorry, list of the potential graduates.
We have a list of potential graduates that we need to approve. Mr. Proffcheck has made that list, and he's checking it twice, so if there are any revisions to it, you will get those prior to the next meeting. We will ask you to approve the list of potential graduates pending completion of all graduation requirements. Multipurpose paper bid. We do belong to the consortium at the IU, and they did go through the bidding process, and Contract Paper Group is the party that they're recommending is the lowest responsible bidder meeting or equaling specifications for the 2013-14 school year, so we would ask that you approve that for our joint purchase of multipurpose paper.
Very good. No comments? Budget discussion, meeting, further discussion on the budget?
We need to set a date to talk a little more about the budget. I would recommend you do that somewhere as close to the end of April as we can. It'll give Mr. Burke a little bit of time to get a little bit acclimated to what we're doing. It'll give Dr. Scott and the principals and managers and myself a little bit of time to continue to pair things down as best we can.
Do you want to keep it on a Thursday, or do you want it to be the last, do you want it to be?
That's the wish of the board.
Thursdays?
The wish of the board.
You like the 25th, or do you want to go to the 30th, Tuesday, 30th?
Either one's fine with me.
The 30th? Everybody going to be around?
April, now what?
April 30th would be Tuesday.
Tuesday evening, okay.
Does that work with your schedule plans?
Yes.
You guys okay over there?
Would that be, we would have a working session then, the May 2?
Right.
Am I looking at the?
Oh.
I mean, I'm not opposed. I'm just trying to look at how many.
April 30th, so we will put that on the agenda with a, ask the commission of the secretary to advertise that appropriately. The next item we have is appraisal services. We had asked us to look at appraisers, and I believe at the last meeting, you actually authorized us to enter into an agreement with the lowest appraiser, so I'm just going to use some information there. Jack Lizza, who does a lot of work for Mr. Potash in terms of real estate appeals, did come in with the lowest bid. I believe his price there was $1,500. And the last item we have has to do with electronic signatures. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, every five years, it requires us to enter into a contract with them that deals with the receipt and dispersments of primarily federal monies, and also, on the E-grant system, every year, we make application for Title $1, Title $2, accountability, block grant dollars, things of that nature. And after the individual, in this case, it's Dr. Scott, who does all the E-grant work, he has to print out a paper. It has to come to the superintendent. The superintendent then has to sign it in blue ink. We have to copy off the rider pages, send it by certified mail, and then presumably, the department of that gets 500 of these certified copies. They are trying to streamline their operation as well and would like to move to an electronic signature where I would receive something when Dr. Scott is finished with the E-grants. I would receive an automatically generated email. I would log on to the system using a password-protected username and then electronically sign via computer, as opposed to the process I just described to you. But in order to do that, it's necessary to have a resolution that the board authorizes us to move from a paper and pencil blue ink signature to an electronic signature.
I have a question on that. Paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4. The 10th word in doesn't make sense to me. Am I not reading it right?
Which paragraph?
Fourth paragraph. Be it further resolved that the body will not to contest.
It may not.
But the word "to," Jack. The body will not to contest.
And I have to share with you, we photocopied the resolution they sent to us. You're right. It doesn't make sense.
That word shouldn't be in there. And then it says, "The body will notify the Bureau of Management Services promptly in case you're not going to do it anymore." You're the only one that's going to do it, right? You're the only electronic signature that's going to be accepted, right?
As long as I'm employees or superintendent.
But you're the only one.
Right.
Okay, so then, we would make no changes until you would be changed, unless it would be for you, but nobody else.
Correct. We're just going to go back to the second session. Yeah, there was a requirement here. The department wants us to have, to pass it. He was the type of, he said, "Pass their legal." Okay. That's really all I have for public consumption, except to remind the board members and anybody that happens to be watching us on Channel 39, April and May are pretty busy months in South Portland, as they are at any school. We have concerts. We have spring sports. We have arts festivals, just a plethora of things going on that our students are involved in, and I would encourage the board members and the general public alike to come out and see what our kids are doing. We're pretty proud of our kids. We're pretty proud of the things they do. So, keep track of what's going on in the district and come to as many events as you can. That's all I have.
I have a question. Can I ask a question? We get this little book, you know, all the time. It says in here that during March, local school administrators should be verifying the 2012-13 course data quality provided to the department. The data quality concerns are most often related to attributing the following: one, students to courses; two, students to teachers; and three, courses to teachers. What is that? I guess you would do that, huh, Tim? You do that?
No, Tim doesn't do that. Peggy does that. The building secretaries do that. The principals are involved in it, and it has to do with PIMS, the Pennsylvania Information Management System. So, at the beginning of the year, we have Mrs. Jones, who is certified to teach secondary English. So, then, on that system, we have her plugged into.
Secondary English.
Secondary English courses. Sometimes, we run into problems, and we have in the past, because, for example, we have a secondary learning support teacher who is also certified to teach English, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, and language arts. So, we have her plugged into a language arts class that she teaches to students who have IEPs, but for some reason, the system kicked that out last year, and it took us about three weeks to verify that, and we had to call a gentleman, actually a PDE, and he had to work with us. But every year, we get a report that says, "All your data is clean, and everybody matches," or whoops, it appears that you have somebody teaching something that they're not certified to teach, and you double-check that for us. And most often, when that occurs, it's because someone made a wrong, all the courses are numbered, so maybe somebody typed in 001 instead of 011, so it's all a keystroke error.
This is under, I had asked the question about the district results on the Keystone exams, and it says here that the release of the new school performance profiles are delayed until fall, and it's in that article, and that's why I didn't, couldn't figure out if that was curriculum versus, like you say, the student count and.
Yeah, it's, well, it's curriculum in as much as making sure teachers are matched with appropriate courses for.
Don't they audit that? Do they audit that, Jack? They audit that? That's what I thought, yeah. Thank you. I was just curious about that.
Anyone, any other board member have any comments or questions? Just one note for next week for the voting meeting. We'll have a motion just to go on record that we have done the assessment of our superintendent. The board will sit through that and just to get it out in public record. I would entertain any motion to adjourn to the second session.
Make a motion.
Rhodes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? At that, leaving adjournments.
I don't want you to miss out a couple of these.